Says here that there was seven in attendance and all of them recommended not in favor of this. What was the reason for that?
Well, it's in your packet, but the discussion that... Yeah, so Mr. Aker is also on the Bristol Planning Commission, so that's great that he's also on our accounting commission. I'm sure he has more information. They were trying to find an alternative solution. When someone comes to us, whether an individual or a group or a business and they are wanting to do something, we find a way in the zoning code to get it done. Whether it's approved or not, this is the avenue. It is zone residential. They don't want to build a house. It is a storage building for the golf carts. Obviously, keep in mind, a B3 zoning does allow a broad land use. So if they change their mind or if they sell it, in theory, it could be a restaurant if there's cover sewer or other things that general retail sales service. So that is what is presented before you. Very specific use and, you know, keep in mind what B3 does allow. It is general business. Um, we did receive, I received two phone calls from the neighbors and once I explained their purpose, you know, they're fine with it. But they are concerned, one of them expressed concern to me, I don't know what happened with the planning commission, that they were worried that if it no longer, excuse me, is for the golf cart storage building, what would happen to it? So I've spoken to the group that's here from that organization and they said that if it's no longer used for this purpose, it goes back to the church.
So the church next to this donated the property to these folks for the golf cart storage?
Yeah, it's a different, you know, entity, but I don't know financially, but let's say they donated it for that purpose.
Is this building going to have offices or bathrooms in?
Well, they're here. I think that's better questions for them. That's great. Um, but just keep in mind, your request is to rezonate it for B3, for this lot. And it was part of a larger farm, so it's no longer a farm and they don't intend on building a residence there. So this is the avenue they should take. Um, and they replied with that, so we presented it. I think Mr. Aker may be able to explain more detail the thinking or the discussion of the Bristol Planning Commission.
Okay. Could we have them speak for their representative?
Yeah, yeah. There are no more questions for me, Amber.
I will, um, I have Commissioner, Commissioner Calton on the board. Commissioner Baker, would you like to go or would you like to hear from the public comment first, would you? Okay. I'll go ahead and recognize Commissioner Aker, then Commissioner Calton, then we'll ask the folks to come up for public comment.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I mean, first of all, no one's against what they're trying to do. We're all in favor of that. What we all discussed was, we, we need to hear this wage with because they've asked for a storage unit to go from R1 to B3. We in Bristol are very hesitant to do a lot of B3s. I remember the myths of cleaning up what is allowed in B3 because of issues like this. Everything Amber says true, everything the Raceway Ministries would say, we all agree, I mean, yeah, everyone's behind it. We just feel like there's probably a better solution than what is currently presented that we have to vote on. Because like you said, no one's against building a shed for golf carts. Problem is, it doesn't allow an R1. The way if you come and you ask zoning, I want to build a shed for golf carts. Therefore, that's what we're looking at. So, yeah, if someone calls and tell you why they're rezoning this, well, we want to build a shed for golf carts because the church is right there, the gentleman's house is right there, it's on really nice spot. Oh, I'm okay with that. Yeah, but B3 opens up a whole can of worms. That's why we're trying to clean it up in Bristol. We're very positive. So the exact comment was, yeah, we all voted, I don't have to vote, no one's. I've already done it once. But we're not against what they're trying to do. We're just saying we think there's probably a better avenue solution if we can come up with it and then let that happen to the golf cart. Zoning B3 is, we just feel like that's the right zone. But it is technically, when you ask and you come and ask zoning, I want to build a shed. Maybe sometimes you gotta ask different questions and everything. So I'm, we're the facts we keep it up for. Because it does, B3 just opens up a whole can, you know, can, it can open up a whole can of worms and different things. Because now it goes from residential to business within your tax station, 25% to 40%. So, and so, it's a beautiful piece of property. The church is right down there, house up here, there's barn up there, carts are in it, alley. To me, everyone fully supports what they're trying to do. I just think it's probably a better solution.
Thank you. Amber, what is the surrounding zoning?
It's on, yeah, it's on the map. It wasn't in your packet and I apologize. I just share what the city's providing. Um, that's the zoning map. The yellow, it is bright yellow. It looks a little faded on that screen. But if the yellows are ones for the only residential, there are B3s and other businesses up along Beaver Creek, you know, all along the way. Some are spot B3s, some are existing businesses that have been there a long time. The corridor in red is state of 394. Um, I added Bristol zoning, so you can see the, all of the zoning. Otherwise, it would be gray out to north of 394. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Glover.
Well, not that I'm totally been supportive of this and worked with them for a streetway years past, but, uh, thank you. Let's see, somewhere in here it said that this property belongs to Mountview Industries. Is that according to these maps?
It was sold to Bristol Raceway Ministries.
Well, is there subdivision of Mountview Industries?
Right, that they owned it at the time for the purposes of selling or donating the lot to this entity. Right.
Did I see somewhere in here that they ran out of business and revert back?
I was told that normally they're, so they'll probably not to come and speak.
Okay. Uh, but if it is B3, they are, I have represented them from the state of Manchester. I prefer that.
Absolutely.
We represent it.
Well, I'm gonna let Commissioner Glover wait, wait in at you, then we're gonna recognize, recognize them.
Are my questions or for them?
I understand. We gotta, we gotta keep, keep it, keep it afloat. I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. They, they made a point that I was getting to. We need to do something to help these folks. It's a storage building for golf carts and it's got to do with the church and the Raceway Ministries. The point I'm trying to make is, we rezoned this commercial. The tax is going to be 40%. And we need to do, Sam, just hold on. We need to do something to help them if we can. Just like David said, there could be an alternative that we can do. If we zonate commercial, that's number two, it's going to be spot B3. And if we don't want to do that, because if we do, that's going off the back of the area of where other things that a church might not live next to. But I think we need to go through the process. Are they aware that if we do rezonate commercial, that their taxes are going to go 40%?
So zoning and taxation don't have anything to do with each other necessarily. Uh, you know, if this was, and we always ask the question, if this is church property with church, you know, facilities, but they're saying it's a storage building. So there's no offices in there, there's no ministry, there's no gatherings, you know, that's exempt from zoning districts. So you still have to do a site plan permit, um, grading permit. Those, we can't exempt those by mistake. But that's not what was expressed to me. And I asked them if this could be on the church campus and there's no room. So it's a separate entity. I don't know their tax structure. I'm assuming they maybe a 51(c)(3). But that really doesn't have anything to do with zoning. And you're right. Always when you get a zoning district request changed to you all, look at the big picture. And that's what we try to check those boxes. My step reports are pretty concise and bullet point. I give you the land use plan, the zoning plan, land use trends, infrastructure is supported, surrounding zonings, and public comment. Um, so I am not aware of Bristol's long range plan in this area. And maybe it doesn't adhere to their long range plan.
Commissioner Irshin.
It's more of a, I guess, a policy or technical question on this is that if this is voted on tonight and voted down, that means it shuts it down for a year?
Yes, and I'm concerned there's only 15 of you all here.
Right.
But I don't think that's fair. This is kind of a trial. I'm just being honest. Maybe that's out of place. But when we don't have the full support of attendance, that puts them at an unfair thing too.
But, so if, if we say no tonight, then it's, that's a year-long, it doesn't matter if they change it from B3 to whatever, it's still shut down for a year?
No, if they revise it to something else, like a B4, they can reapply on that.
That was, that was my curious thing. Okay, thank you.
And that's a Sullivan County zoning rule, not a state law. So, but that's always been in place since 1988. You don't have to wait a year if you reapply with the same decision.
Mrs. Thorpe, anyone that wishes to come up from, from the group and, uh, this way, if multiple of you have questions for them, I can recognize you and keep them there for that. And if there's more than one of you that's quite eager to answer questions, feel free to come up. Commissioner Jones.
Don't we need to just say that I address the director?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Ellis Bishop. I'm the director of Raceway Ministries. Uh, currently reside in Johnson City at 1412 Woodmont Drive.
Are you been doing repair work on these golf carts in this building?
Uh, not rebuilding, maybe changing the oil or something.
Do you plan on having a bathroom in this building for your employees out there?
Uh, we actually do. It's, I'm not sure what originally got relayed, but, uh, a-
Porch and ice cone, I don't know.
Okay, sorry. Uh, the front portion, we had had, uh, we originally intended for an office or storage type space for our records, things like that, for us to hold meetings and the remainder of the facility to be for our golf carts. We do have 16 golf carts. They take up a lot of space and the longer we leave them in the weather, the more we have to do to it.
What size building? I haven't seen that inside building you're putting on.
Uh, we have originally planned an 80 foot wide, not 60, or 80 foot long, uh, with 48 foot walls.
So you, if you put a bathroom, you might have to build a system out there.
Yes.
According to this, there is no sewer. There is water from South Fork Retail.
Right.
Your property. If we rezonate this, your, I guess, stated intentions have been that it revert back to, uh-
To the Mountview Ministries.
Mountview Ministries. Is that the church that's out there?
Yes, uh, every Brad Jones for that property.
Okay. So if it, if it is B3 and that, and we never changed it, they could put an automotive repair shop in there, boat sales, I'm just looking for some of the things that are listed.
Right.
That could go in there, you all, your systems and, uh, that were to happen.
Right.
Amber, would you pull your mic out?
Sure. So, I mean, I'm supportive of Raceway Ministries. You've worked with me in the past. I was in different projects at Speedway. Uh, I guess I was just curious when I first saw this, why, uh, there was a facility on Speedway property?
There actually was. We did have it there at one point. The Beaver Creek flooded and they had to destroy our old office because it was in a flood plain. They would have to raise the parking lot up like 4 feet.
Right.
And, you know, they had to do that. So they demolished our office, basically.
I'd like to put some on here.
Thank you.
If you would, sir, would you care to repeat the name of your address, if you only call just a little bit then?
Ellis Bishop. Address is 1412 Woodmont Drive, Johnson City. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Vanover.
Mr. Bishop, I've got two questions real quick for you. First, are also tax status of Raceway Ministries. Are they a nonprofit or a 501(c)(3) or?
Uh, we are a 501(c)(3), except for permission.
Would you consider maybe another zoning, aside from B3?
Sure, as long as we can work within that to get what we need done, to us, it doesn't matter about zoning.
Commissioner Aker, then Commissioner Mains.
Thank you, Chairman. Amber, can I, my, my address, I'll work it. Can you go through what R1 allows on the property now? Do you have a handy or a document?
R1 allows single-family site built or modular homes and their associated residential accessory structures like a yard, barn, garage for their personal residence.
Right. And, uh, I was wondering, there, there could be unused water supply. This was, we went through some other zoning that they, Reverend Branch was there trying to get up. There's two issues. One, we, we have to act on this one and that's the thing. They've asked for storage in at the B- Well, they were probably got, I won't say they asked, but just feel like what, what you talked about was there, there could be some other zoning opportunities and how to get there coming up. But that's not something we can solve tonight. But there is some other uses, like you mentioned about office space or, you know, bathrooms and all that, that really that-
So I'm not sure what those zoning districts would provide that the B3 doesn't. So a B1 is a neighborhood business. It's not for this type building. Neighborhood business is convenience.
I mean, that, that, we're looking at office space, libraries.
B2 is historic lump load. B4 is an arterial business, so, you know, you could do a B4. This is a state highway, um, you know, albeit a two lane highway. And then there's the planning businesses. The only difference is, planning businesses, a site plan goes to the planning commission instead of Jason and I were doing it. But this, you know, it has greater setbacks. So planning business is really for a larger development, like a shopping center, because you have greater setbacks. So I thought I was advising on what we have in the books.
That's what she did. But I think we all get stuck in the storage unit that has to be on the B3, which is technically correct. Just felt like, like you said, they, they could do some more stuff there maybe and have a better-
Well, that's up to them.
That's what I'm saying. That, she can't answer that. That, this isn't on it. Amber's answered the question that they asked and everything. This, but then when you think about what they could do there, because like Sam said, do they need office space? Do they need meeting space? That type of stuff. Mike figured that answer out.
Okay. That's up to them, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, that's the thing. That's the problem. We all get in here, done this stuff for 40 years on this. We all want to find a solution because we kind of agree with what they're doing. It's just, is that solution the one that's sitting here on the paper that is asked for? And that's what we have to vote up or down. And then they, and then like Commissioner Irshin said, it does preclude them from asking for B3 again. That's what I understand. But it does preclude them from finding other avenues to get to where they want to get to. Yeah.
Commissioner Mains.
Thank you. Uh, so, but this does put them back in here if you want to approve them.
No, if they, if they prepare how to build something around under R1, they can start tomorrow. Or if we want to zone it to something different that we're not playing, then we're talking 30, 50 days.
You can break that as a dissent.
Yeah.
Breakdown, Commissioner Mains. Everybody was talking about you.
Okay, that was it. This is not, okay, but the breakdown is not them. It's not technically. Amber has done what she's supposed to do. They've done what they're supposed to do. So the issue is back in our responsibility, basically, the government, the county government. And so you were talking about Bristol's commission. Do you know what their long-term plan is? And how long that that's going to take before they get a plan together to approve something to help approve them? Is this it?
Yeah, as of right now, I don't think there's a true long-term plan for businesses right there. Because if you see on there, if you go around the corner, on down there to that first red, uh, is a, uh, right on where you bike, is that the storage units? Or stored, like a storage?
Uh, can't go here. I think it is. This is right off the range of 394.
Yeah, so if you see all that yellow, it's all R1 right there. Yeah, so there's really no true plan to change that to anything other than residence right now.
So you-
So you have like-
You implied that we, that Bristol may want, was doing some things to clean it up.
Well, we, no, we just said, we think there's solutions better than this. But the problem is, this is what is on the table for us to vote up or down.
Right.
Yeah. So Bristol voted it down.
Yeah.
Well, no, we agree. Well, we've talked to Reverend Branch that night. We think there's some other, but we can't really come up with those answers here because we're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to adapt behind this. We've got all that residential and then the green is A, A1, A2.
Yeah, the green is A1. The purple is planning business, the grays are-
What they did was good. It just doesn't conform. And so unless, before we blow up, conform it, they said there's a better way to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Aker. I did want to just make a comment. It's a real honor to have Bristol Raceway Ministries in here. You folks, man, you all work in the rain and the sweat and the heat and I just wanted to tell you thanks for what we do and, um, that's it basically. So thanks for being here.
Mrs. Thorpe.
Unless you have more questions.
If there was one else from, from the organization, which is speaking. If you will introduce yourself and your, your address for our electronic president.
Reverend Branch. I'm the pastor of Mountview Ministries. We own the majority of the property that you're looking at. We own 33.93 acres. Six of that acres is the house that I live in, amongst the main deed to me. It is attached to the property that we gave away. As Mr. Bishop said, we've been at Speedway for 33 years and the property that we were leasing that are actually being there flooded and we were out of commission except to transport back and forth to the Speedway for every event which we offer transportation for and ministry work. And so for a year, we looked for a place that we could purchase that was close enough to the Speedway and where it was advantageous for us with our trucks and trailers to transport 16 carts and three or four mules down to the track to use on a regular basis several times a year. We had struggled doing that, basically because we're a nonprofit and property within three to five miles of the Speedway runs about $40,000 acre. Hard for a ministry like ours to function that way. Being the pastor of the church and having a large piece of property there, uh, the church decided that since a lot of our people work with Raceway Ministries, that we would give a portion of land there. And we did that to begin with some money to build a building. Just about a month ago, I approached the county looking for a permit to build. We were looking for a permit to build on a R1 and we were told we could not build on R1, that we'd have to change it to B3. That wasn't our idea. That was our county's idea to change it to B3. The city thought that we should not do that for several reasons because we're upon the residential. As I said, um, there's no land that's touching what we gave away to anybody else but us. My house is part of that land and the church is the rest of that land. Um, and so we, the city discussed with us about looking at some other option. And so we have looked at some other option and have been looking at, talking with a gentleman who is willing to build a post field building on the property and have been referenced it as being a garage type storage unit, which he tells us he builds all the time on our land. I don't have any opposition just being out beside my house, which attaches that property. The other part of the backside of that property belongs to the church, but there's no one there that has opposition to be insulted. Only opposition I understand we have is a position across the street of the lady who has told me for the last 20 years, she moved the concrete, she wants to renovate the concrete and she's not in favor of anything we do there, including a church. And so, uh, that's her option. As I said, it's just a ministry that serves the public, serves the fans of the Bristol Speedway. And, um, we'd like to build a, on that R1, the gentleman who is looking at building us a building says that he's been building on R1, that type of building all over the town. And so that's where we stand. Open for questions, open for suggestions. We're not, we didn't want to build, build, put our parts in. They're in high water and when the weather turns cold, then it starts working on the tires and starts working on the batteries. And, uh, so we just need a place to build. We're, we're open for suggestions. We're not here to kind of push anything. We simply want to build a building and go about our ministry and choose them while we do it.
Thank you, sir. We have a few people have some questions for you, if that's okay?
Sure, yes, sir.
First, we recognize Commissioner Glover, then Commissioner Jones.
Thank you for coming. What, what kind of timeframe, if this was zoned for you to move for, what kind of timeframe are you looking at to get started on this?
The gentleman told us that if we would sign the contract, he could finish it in about five weeks.
Okay.
We have the money, we're ready.
Okay. Amber, just questions for you. If we were to table this for 30 days to look at another alternative for these folks, would that set the process back or could we go ahead and table it for 30 days to the next meeting till we come up with a solution? Because I don't want these folks paying 40% of assessed value for strawberries. And, uh, maybe there's some way we can look at some alternative, like the other commissioners have said, that-
So probably, um, maybe some discussions with them on their long-term plan, you know, if- You know, if, for this building. And maybe that's an offline conversation. But you can't table it and change it without going through the full public zoning process, which means back to Bristol Planning Commission, letters, public notice, and reschedule here. So, that would mean they would miss the August race, you know, whenever it is in this long race. So, um, I, I don't want to, I think some things might just be better if I discuss this, if they have a long-term solution that might fit. You know, when churches build, we don't ask them everything they're doing in the church. But typically, it's a church, we have churches and metal buildings. Yes, contractors come in and get permits for post-still buildings, but they're residential post-still buildings, or they're not commercial lots. So, the type of structure and the company you choose, it's not that, it's the land use. So, the land use presented to us was storage building for golf carts, you've heard, maintenance and things like that. If this is, you know, a ministry where they have offices, and I'm not going to get into the religious freedom thing, it's complicated. But if that's their end goal, then that needed to have been presented. In which case, we would have treated it as a church property.
So, if we go ahead and pick one tonight and then get started, we can all, they can all just come back and we can go through another process and procedure to change it for them.
Correct.
If, if you rezone it, we're done, they can submit a site plan and then get a building permit. I can't issue a building permit without a site plan, but they do, they do a surveyor, I'm sure that'll get it done. So, either rezone it to B3 so they can move on, or ask them to defer. And maybe they can present a more comprehensive plan for long-term use that's more than just a storage building. That would be fair. But it's a separate entity of the church and, you know, different name. So, there's a lot of ministries out there, but we don't research their tax structures. It's what was presented to me, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Irison.
Uh, the fact of the thing, everybody, if you are operating under two different 501s, the church is over here as one. And don't go far, I have a reason for wanting them in. Raceway Ministries, that, I don't know if you needed or just gave them that land to put the building on. But where I'm going is, we have redid our residential base down from, just step on wrong.
That has nothing to do with you.
No, wait a minute, until I finish. We, if there was a larger acreage, we allowed a larger building.
If the house was
He had, well, the house is how many acres? Six, six.
But this is a separate lot now, under a separate entity.
But if it was the church only, if they did, if they said, well, we're going to take the property back, the church, it has to be resident, what's the church zone?
Church can be in any zoning district.
What's a zoning is then?
R1.
So, they've got the acreage, the church has to put up a storage building.
Well, it is, it's private residence.
Is, but the church property, not the Raceway Ministry, the whole church property was how many acres?
Thirty-three point, thirty-nine or forty-nine acres.
Well, thirty-nine acres, whatever. They have the acreage to put up a post-still building for storage on those property. Or, and the building could then be leased to Raceway Ministries. I'm just looking at some alternatives that could be done. They could do that.
That's up to them if they want to.
I know it's up to them, I'm just talking out loud to some op, some opportunities that may be there for you all to work together, since you said most of your members are part of Raceway Ministries anyway. The church could not, could take back the property, authorize a new whatever site plan for this building, and then at least get over Raceway Ministries. Church.
Well, it
Church can, what?
It's for the church.
Huh?
Churches are exempt from zoning districts. It's building permits and plans and all that.
I know that.
But this purposely is a separate entity. So, if they wanted to allow the church to get the permit under the applicant and back to a church property, so revert this land back to them or put it in a different location, we would have thought of it as an expansion of the church facility.
Is it because it's on the corner of Great Pike and Ojo, though?
I, I don't know, maybe further. Well, it's not the location for your structure, it's the use of your structure. So, what we're saying is, a lot more discussion than we already have there. If you wanted to work with the church and build a building on the church property, they would own the structure, you know, the contractor will pull the permit, but they're the applicant. It's their building, it's then part of their jurisdiction. But you've set up this separate entity, and they donated you a lot, so, yeah. Yeah. It's something to think about.
So, since we have, already have a building that belongs to the church, that is a chapel building, and a male-friendly building that's a ministry building, and a house that's on the property, and all those things have been approved for R1, just because it belongs to another pocket ministry, it cannot be something?
Well, if it's presented to us as a site plan for the church, then it's expanded plan of the church, on church property. I'm not thinking that. That's all I'm also thinking.
Commissioner Jones.
So, is Raceway Ministries a church?
We are, our ministry is consistent of chaplains and Christian workers who provide many services to Bristol Raceway Ministries, from the transportation to building weddings and generals at the track.
My, my question is, if you did, if you, if Raceway Ministries acted as a church, not asking for a rezoning to B3, but as a church and built a church building and used it for storage. That's what we're trying to say.
I guess my question, my, my question would be, what is different in the ministry, or whether it is called a church or called Bristol Raceway Ministries, or is it actually basically the same?
Well, that, that's kind of where we're going to help you along, is to get out to B3. And as an R1, the church
What recommendations would be, would begin with us?
Now, we have, you have to make your own decisions on that. We can't tell you what to do. We can suggest some things, you discuss it. Come back if you want to say we don't, we want to withdraw our zoning request and stay in R1.
On reality, if I did not request a zoning change, I almost hope I had to have it.
Well, I, I can't speak to that. I was saying there may be a, and that's what Bristol's saying also, there may be an alternative way they're trying to work with you too. Just can't do it under this.
Their option is it was that we build a post-still building. Senator Libar, Senator Libar, and that's, that's why we're here. Maybe I misunderstood.
Commissioner Eger.
We need to, to sort of
Recognize Commissioner Eger.
I, I think we all take a five-minute recess because we got a lot of side conversations going on and everything.
All in favor of five-minute recess?
Aye.
Aye.
There's a back end of old business in our... The zoning amendments, we can recognize Amber Torbit and Mr. Branch.
After discussion, we're going to withdraw our request and work out some other option.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Without objection, recognize Mrs. Torbit on amendment number two for the zoning plan.
Thank you. That's the ticket forward to the next. I appreciate it. So the next request is from Scott Christina Tally. They own a four acre tract on Houston Road. It is currently zoned O R one, and they would like to rezone it for A one because it's a larger track. The zoning map, it looks like a hodgepodge. The blues are still all farmland. Those were rezoned, I believe, when they thought your poor car lane was coming through. Several of those tracks have been zoned back for agricultural, if you recall, like on Cash Avenue and so forth. So this request went to our planning commission. Mr. Tally's here if you have any questions for him, and he would like to build a storage building also for farming, but you know, to store, he's got a lot of things just under tarp, so I'm sure he would like to put undercover. If you want to show some of the pictures, that's the view from the road when we put the sign up. As you can see, it goes way back before you get to his home. There's an aerial view. In your packet, there might be some more pictures. Again, the planning commission recommended in favor of this request, and there was no opposition.
You've heard the explanation. Any questions for Mrs. Torbit on amendment number two? Would Mr. Tally wish to address the commission? Anyone have any questions for Mr. Tally? Recognize Commissioner Jones.
Seeing as how this is, I believe, wait a minute, maybe in your district, Joyce, which side of the road is not? That's the dividing line. We would support it. I would.
Thank you, Senator.
Commissioner King.
What size of storage building is he going to build?
I don't know. We haven't done the permitting part of it, but he would be allowed at the 2,400 square feet of detached accessory structure square footage because he has over an acre, so about four acres.
What's he going to store in?
Yeah, so like I said, I believe the purpose is for multipurpose. When I visited the site, he has several structures under tarp. I'm sure he wants to put those undercover, and there's a large garden there, and the back half is mostly wooded.
Is it tractor, farm equipment?
It's not exempt from zoning. We go over that every time someone applies for a permit. If it's not 100% agricultural, then they go through this process. It gives them some flexibility, you know, if they want to put a car or a boat, that's their choice. But sure, if it's for, if it's a farm and it's agricultural, I'm sorry, I always wonder what you're asking me because we go through this with every folk that come through and want to get a permit with large acreage.
Okay. I get all this kind of stuff, same question, so.
Well, we try to work with people, and the new zoning code is really helping out. I know we get a lot of these, I feel like this is growing pains. When we amended the ordinance to allow more square footage, it's actually, I know you're getting more rezonings for these ag districts, but that's an opportunity for them that they didn't have before. Because before, it's 2,000 square feet for everyone. And so now we have this matrix based on your district and your land size, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Mrs. Torbit, do you have a final comment on amendment two, if you have anything?
Well, again, the planning commission unanimously forged you a favorable recommendation, and there was no opposition.
Without objection, members ready to vote on amendment number two. Without objection, final question. On the board of office, please cast a vote. A member voted. Any member wish to change their vote? Amber Torbit.
Sixteen yes, eight absentee.
Having received necessary majority, amendment number two is passed.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Without objection, we'll end the public hearing. The person who's on the back end of our meeting session under new business. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Van Over on item number two.
Thank you, Mr. Porten. Item number two is a resolution to adopt an indemnification policy for Sullivan County Commissioners and the assistant to the commission. Therefore, be it resolved, Sullivan County government will cover any legal costs incurred by any member or members of Sullivan County Commission arising from the civil lawsuit filed against any such member or members, or conduct within the normal course and scope of their duties, and the same shall apply to the assistant to the commission. Further be it resolved, the commission absorbed, further be it resolved, the cost absorbed by the county shall be set at up to $25,000 per case initially. Further be it resolved, if actual cost of the case exceeds $25,000 or 20% or more, additional cost must be approved by the full county commission. Further be it resolved, in the event the county commission members prevail in the awarded reimbursement of legal fees, those fees shall be paid back to Sullivan County up to the amount of funding provided by the county. This resolution was presented with cause, I think it should have proven acting on her behalf to have a safety net in case things of this nature happen. I think we kind of had two choices. We can be proactive and do the prudent thing and try to have measures in place in case something unfortunate happens, or we can just sit back and hope nothing unfortunate happens. I, for one, would like to go in the record set and like to have a upped head plan. Like to have a procedure in place in case something like this was to happen to one or all of us. I'm hoping for questions.
You've heard the explanation. Any questions for the sponsor? Commissioner Calvin.
Thank you. If it was to happen, and hope it wouldn't, would this $25,000 or more come out of the general fund?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you need to put that in your resolution?
I mean, so, yes, can we pile that in there? In the third line from the bottom, make it further be it resolved, the crash in Norbly County shall be set at up to $25,000 per case initially paid forward from funds from the general fund. Get that. Thank you.
Commissioner Mace.
Thank you, Chairman. Regarding the assistant, because that person who is not, is not an elected official, just because he's a county, former county worker, does that person or that position, is it already covered?
I'm really not sure yet, but I just know when litigation happens, it's usually about the shotgun method. They usually sue everyone involved and the assistant to the commissions and not being in the department of the commission, so that's why that was had. I'm not sure if y'all have other insurance or not, maybe Mr. Street.
Good luck to the rest of attorney street.
We do have insurance, yes, for our employees and our officials. We have $100,000 available, that's what the county has to pay, but we still have insurance. I guess that was the question, wasn't it?
Does the insurance cover such things as this?
Well, I think that's the whole question, is what is things such as this, what is this trying to cover? You know, I mean, that's why, I don't know where to start on this. You could really end up going down a rabbit hole on. You could get sued for a lot of different things. I don't think any commissioner has been sued since I've been county attorney. I've lost track of how long that's been, that's been a long time. But you could be sued for anything, so, you know, sometimes, I guess, like if somebody sued you for, the example was given, how you voted on a zoning issue, that in and of itself, you would be covered, because I, that language for the normal course and scope of your duties, our insurance would cover you. Now, if it turns out that you, well, that's a bad example, because you can't really be spoiled by somebody calling you. I fought that battle before. You don't have the same obligations and neutrality of, for example, the Dutch. Anyway, I don't want to go on and on and on, but we do have insurance that protects our employees and our county officials, yes. If you get sued for doing something wrong, I can't really think of any examples, but, I mean, our insurance is not going to protect you, just like your car insurance won't protect you if you purposely run somebody down. If you do something wrong, and it's not inside the scope of your course and scope of your duties, our insurance is not going to protect you. Now, this won't either, because theoretically it shouldn't, but ouster, you know, I mean, if somebody files a motion to oust you, or lawsuit to oust you, we won't really know until the end whether or not you've committed any wrongs, because you have a right to defend yourself, so it doesn't really say whether this money's paid upfront or what. You know, I don't know how that pays. We do have insurance, yes.
Thank you, Attorney Street. Commissioner Jones.
You know, this is limited to civil lawsuits. Since I've been here, there's only been one criminal, and that took place, and, you know, this is just a, criminal's a whole nother deal, right?
Commissioner Van Over, do you have a final comment on the resolution, sir? If no one has, attorney street, just try to do it one more time.
Well, you know, criminal is a whole nother deal, but what if you're found not guilty? I mean, what if you're charged with assault? What if after a meeting, a citizen comes up to you and tells you what he thinks of you, and you respond, and then he charges you with assault? You have to defend yourself. Was this officer over there arresting you? I mean, in the end, you could be found not guilty, so, that's a criminal case, so. I mean, I guess what I'm trying to make is, it's sort of like the expression, the more you try to corner a mouse, the more opportunity you give him to escape. You know, maybe we should just pass it like it is and not try to take it really. We'll interpret it when it happens, and it probably won't ever happen, so. But, you know, I have to get a lot of them. I don't know what to say or something like this.
If no one has any further question for the sponsor, recognize Commissioner Van Over.
Thank you, thank you, Candy, Attorney Street. If there's no objection, I'd like to ask for the consent calendar. As a matter of fact.
Sponsor moves consent counter on item number two. Any objection to item number two being placed on consent counter?
We got plenty of law.
Is there any objection?
You know, we're outstanding.
The resolution will then itself, as it's written on, yeah.
If there's an objection, I suggest that's for waiver rule.
Is there an objection to item number two being placed on consent counter? Without objection, item number two is placed on consent counter. We'll leave your microphone on. Commissioner Van Over, recognize you on item number three. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Van Over on item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Porten. Item number three is a resolution to authorize the Sullivan County person to manage it and county mayor to enter an agreement for municipal solid waste disposal services with EcoSafe Systems LLC, a subsidiary of Advanced Disposal Services. Moving down to the last line, be it further resolved that the board of county commissioners of Sullivan County Tennessee hereby approve the terms of the contract set out for it. And I'm just going to maybe try to save some time here. This is the exact same contract that had been passed five years ago. Just changed the numbers. Under item number one, base rate for five-year term, contractor should be paid by the county for disposal services provided here under an initial rate of 2323 per ton. The old rate was 1991 per ton. Mark Corbett negotiated this deal, and he says nothing's changed in the contract except for that number. And this goes into effect the end of July, so without any objection, I'd like to put this on waiver rules.
You've heard the explanation of item number three. Sponsor moves waiver rules. Any questions for the sponsor?
Could this be consent? Because this is not, this is a pre-约定 contract, right? It's just as pretty.
Commissioner King.
This is a contract that EcoSafe.
Waste Management. Their contractual name is EcoSafe. We talked about this, we talked about the contract, but this is the way it has to be worded according to Chris Davis. The waste management is the contract.
We originally had a contract with EcoSafe.
Yes. Any objection to waiver rules on this? I mean, on the consent counter on this?
Sponsor moves consent counter on item number three. Any objection to item number three is placed on consent counter? Any objection? Without objection, item number three is placed on consent counter. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Cross on item number four.
This is a grant, the library's got, they're actually going to bring in another one for, for next week, but these are just accepting two grants, one of which was matching, but she's matching that within her own budget. So no money's from us, and I like this one, and when it comes up next week, the other one, I like the waiver rules on. Because I don't know which one is the matching one, I'm going to ask them for consent, but waiver rules on that.
That's item number four, and the, what was the other one you was talking about? It's not ready?
Yeah, it's not there tonight. We'll be next week.
It will be next week.
Just put both on labels before.
This one I like.
Sponsor moves waiver rules on item number four. Without objection, move on item number five. Anyone having objection, like presenting item number five from the chair? I don't think you get it, I'm like, seriously, do you think you can do another? Item, item number five is a homeland security grant for $134,000. There's no matching funds, and it's to purchase equipment for training. And if, there's no objection to item number five being placed on consent counter. I moved item number five, it's placed on consent counter. Doesn't spend any money. It's a, it's a no matching grant. Without objection, item number five is placed on consent counter. Thank you all for that. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Harvey on item number six.
Thank you, Chairman Porten. This resolution is to accept funds and appropriate funds from the Tennessee Office of Criminal Justice Programs Grant in the amount of $416,834. There were no matching funds that were required. Board of County Commissioners of Sullivan County authorized this Sullivan County Mayor to execute the Tennessee Volun Crime Intervention Fund Grant in the amount of $416,834 to be used as required by the Sullivan County Sheriff's Office. Sullivan County is hereby authorized to receive appropriate and expend said grant from and try to execute the amount of $416,834, and requesting us on waiver rules. And this was to, oh, good consent.
Sponsor, sponsor moves consent counter for item number six. Any objection to item number six being placed on consent counter? Without objection, item number six is placed on consent counter. Recognize Commissioner Cross, file on item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Porten. I don't really think that we can bring this forward tonight because the budget isn't there yet. So we will need to wait until the budget meets and grant for the majority of this time.
It's off the, look at the top, look at the very first.
It's on white.
On the very top. Says it's pending, y'all's next meeting.
Yes, yes.
Do you wish to defer until the next meeting?
Yes, yes, that's what I'm saying.
We got an email from.
We got an email from the state that 5:45 on the 20th, that's right before our commissioners were.
So we can vote, we can look at it then. Like I said, we don't have any questions.
Commissioner.
Garland stole my thunder.
She does that.
Yeah, she does.
But she's so cute, though, actually.
And you can't beat that.
Well, we are going to leave next Thursday at 5:00.
Sponsor, sponsor to defer item number seven, being the budget made. That completes our... Did you have a question on that?
I just wanted to say one thing before we adjourn, that everybody probably heard it. Commissioner Terry Harper wrote, passed away about three weeks ago, and I don't think we mentioned it, that's the condition we need to get, but I just want to just let everyone know that he's passed away, and he's a good friend of mine for a long time, and I just know when I was elected, I would have sat in his seat, but for some reason, and I guess I was just hoping to know that you were a part of all of this, so just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all putting up with me. Larry Crawford, Commissioner Crawford is traveling with Indians in Wisconsin and Michigan. Just keep him in the first. I did have an issue, and I'm not sure where this is getting originated. I got an email earlier this week, and I had, I would have had ones, the agenda and the second page, the summaries. Well, I can't study the resolutions unless I give them, and I was told that that was the way it was supposed to be sent out. First time in history that I can remember commissioners never got a full agenda to look at or study. In fact, when I first came out, the deputies delivered them to our house the week before so we could study it. You only find that unusual, but that's the way it was, in electronic. But I just find that really, I have a real issue with not being able to see the agendas and study, and if I need to call someone and ask them a question about why they've got this resolution. I can't wait till the night that they get in front of us to start asking those questions. And I had some questions, and they were answered, and I appreciate that. They never made that decision not to send these out. Needs to tell us why that they made that decision and told our assistant not to send those out to us. I have some problems with that. Thank you.
Recognize Commissioner Pierce.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to pass along some information from the Base Mountain Park. Today, they had to close some of the nature trails because of bear activities, and some of those trails will be closed for a few days. That's from the Base Mountain Park. So lovely information, I think on the news media that today.
Thank you, Commissioner Pierce. We're at the end of the counter. If anyone had any other closing questions or comments earlier?
We did have a groundbreaking yesterday, and a couple of us were there, but that's a huge investment in Sullivan County. They've taken through networks in Bristol, essential services, and TVA, and, you know, that's a $40 million investment, 58 jobs, and a senior corporation, and they're looking at expansion beyond that, so that's a huge thing. And then yesterday morning, we had the ribbon cutting for the Drug Rehabilitation Center. I think it's called Northeast Tennessee Rehab Drug Rehabilitation Center. Had a good turnout over there, and glad to see that get going. That should remove a few more. We'll probably replace them right away, but from our jail gives us another facility that we can send some prisoners to receive treatment and hopefully get back out protected.
Commissioner.
Thank you. I'm just glad that Commissioner Jones and Mayor Mittel were not locked up in that facility yesterday. It's all in that groundbreaking, so that's good. No, it's just, not my groundbreaking, that was a good one, I was going to mention it, but I said it, the hard work. And it's going to be a few more, hopefully, there's some good discussions. But that was a big piece of track, that, and one of the reasons why, if you remember, that's because we don't have some access to the railroad right there. So, you know, we, but also next Wednesday, I was trying to find my email real quick, in Bristol, there's going to be a groundbreaking for part of the new baseball field. That's going to be happening with, it's a private partnership with the Boyd Sports, which is owned by Randy Boyd, and so they're moving the St. Livers, I guess that's what it's called now, that's what it's called, over there, but it'll also be part of the field for the high school and junior high and everything, so that's really exciting. And, you know, I made this up to the budget, or Commissioner Bill last week, for a couple of these fields and the rest, but Sullivan County's winning. Sullivan County's got a lot going on right now, and it's a very exciting time. Like I said, Stuart Ward, who, I've been a few thanks to him, from Nashville, I think this is his fifth time he's been up here, is that right? Yeah. And so, trust me, Nashville knows where Sullivan County is, and we are doing extremely well. Thank you.
That clears the board. Anyone have any other questions or comments?
Motion.
Motion to adjourn. All may say aye?